And we're just missing Cindy. Cindy said she was coming? Cindy? Emily, did Cindy say she was coming? Okay, I thought she said she was coming. We'll get started. I think so. All right. I'm going to get started just because in respect of everybody's time. So I'd like to call the joint meeting of the Board of Education and Town Council, the Budget Subcommittee Meeting to order. Today is Thursday, March 30th, 2017, and the time is 7:02. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, we're going to start with a roll call of the Board Subcommittee, which I know we have everybody here. We're just going to do it in this manner. So we'll start with a roll call of the Subcommittee, which is, go ahead. So it's Jane Ancona.
Yeah, Jane Ancona Siegel.
Paul Vassella.
And Emily. Emily Guyen. Okay, thank you. And then we are going to, we need to amend the agenda. Let's see here. Amending the agenda. Okay, can I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended? Okay, a motion made by Mrs. Ancona. Can I have a second?
Point of order. Point of order. The agenda before us is not the agenda that was posted with the town clerk 24 hours in advance as required by Connecticut's Freedom of Information Statute.
Correct.
Therefore, any action on the agenda, to my mind, is questionable.
And we, we'll pass this down. We checked with the town clerk today, and he said it was, this was what needed to be done to do that. He said this was done regularly?
What is the source of this? It does not appear to be the Connecticut general statutes.
This came from the town clerk.
If I may. My understanding from speaking with the town attorney earlier today was that the only way to amend, that there's no way to amend a special agenda, that a regular agenda can be amended prior to a meeting, but a special meeting agenda cannot be amended unless it's prior to the 24-hour posted notice. So a regular meeting can be amended at the beginning of a meeting, agenda meeting. Yes?
May I ask what the objection is?
Complying to the state law.
My objection is that the public saw it posted one way, and whether they were going to come or not for any certain reason or to have comment, they should have been noticed at 24 hours with the correct reason on it. So in other words, you know, if they wanted to come or hear because of real estate versus budget, then that's why we have to notice.
But it was under executive session.
Correct, but they would still come to hear, they would still be able to, so there's plenty of rumors out there about what the executive session would have been on.
Okay.
And so.
So are you, this point of order that you're making, why are you saying that you object and you don't want to continue with this meeting because of the way this went down? Is that what you're saying?
Basically, yes.
The discussion can continue.
We can go through 3 dot 1, and then we missed Roman numerals 4 and 5. We go to Roman numeral 6 for adjournment.
I guess I'm confused.
Yeah, budget is not a subject of executive session, so that was a clear, clear error. So that's.
Can somebody please explain, because I guess I didn't.
Go ahead, wait, sorry, sorry, Maureen, go ahead.
Pay close enough attention. So are we saying it said executive session?
It said executive session dash budget, and we realized this afternoon that that was an error.
Okay.
So Bill called me at, I don't know, 3 or 4 o'clock this afternoon and said they were going to see if it would be okay, and they looked into, would it be okay to amend the agenda? And we were told.
Sophie went to the town clerk's office and asked.
She said it was okay.
She said this happens all the time? Or he said this happens all the time?
Well, and in fact, in the past, there have been many a council, town council, I don't recall the Board of Ed, but town councils that have had executive session that didn't reflect what the executive session is and never even said what they were going into executive session for. So I guess I'm not quite sure why we're making such a big deal about this.
Mr. Shulman.
I guess my question would be, what part of the general statutes are you interpreting that a Board of Education Subcommittee Meeting regularly scheduled constitutes a special meeting of anybody? Because it's a Subcommittee Meeting, it doesn't follow the same regular special meeting that a town council or a Board of Ed regular meeting would go to. This is a Subcommittee Meeting held by the Board of Ed. I don't see any reason why you can't amend the agenda under, any regular reason.
It's a public meeting as defined by Connecticut's Freedom of Information Act, starting with 1 dash 200, which specifies what the legitimate subjects for executive session are, what the agenda posting requirements are for both regular meetings and special meetings.
And what in there tells you that a Board of Education Subcommittee Meeting that's not labeled special indicates that you have to follow special committee meeting rules?
It's, it's still a public meeting subject.
In regularly scheduled public meetings, you can amend the agenda. We've done it over and over again, and that's perfectly fine. What you can't do is amend the agenda for a special meeting. This is not a special meeting. It's a regularly scheduled Subcommittee Meeting. I mean, that's how the Freedom of Information Act works.
Maureen.
Personally, I think we would have a bigger issue here if we, when we had the public thought we were going into executive session to discuss the budget. They can't come into executive session, whether we're discussing real estate. There's only three reasons you can go into executive session. Personnel matters. If we, if we went into executive session, the public was thinking it was to discuss the budget, I believe it would be a bigger issue for us than the fact that we're, than we're correcting it and stating that we are going into executive session. And I guess those that want to can, and those that don't want to don't have to, to discuss a real estate issue.
Okay.
I'm still maintain that this is a special meeting as defined under 1 dash 225 of the Act of the General Statutes.
So duly noted. Carol.
I just want to say that people do think we're going in executive session for budget, because that's the buzz going around town today. It was posted on Facebook and several sites, and they're all questioning, how can we go in executive session for the budget? So it's out there. I understand what you're trying to do. I would like to go for real estate, but it's whatever the consensus is of this body. It's, maybe it's your Subcommittee Meeting, but we don't have a Subcommittee that's attending this meeting. We're attending this meeting as an entire body of the council. So whatever your choice is, but there is a buzz out there that we're going into budget, and they're all questioning it.
Didn't the town council go into executive session for budget the other night?
No.
No, we went in for real estate, and we went in for contracts. And that was what was on our agenda.
As I see it, you can do whatever you want, and if you go into executive session on the Subcommittee, anyone can file a Freedom of Information complaint, and they're entitled to do that, but that doesn't foreclose you from doing it.
Would we like to go around the room and say how we would like to proceed? Because at this point, we're kind of at a crossroads.
We consulted with the Board Council, and the question was, what is the bigger issue? Is it, is it a, is it an FOI issue or is it a matter of trying to get the community together to solve a problem? And that was the key question where he left us at. And so if you have, he said nothing to hide, then, then, you know, then just go for it. And if somebody files an FOI complaint, you go through it. But he clearly said, what is your bigger concern? That or trying to get the community together into a win-win situation for the entire community? And so that's essentially where we are, I believe.
Suggestions then from those at the end of the table on how you'd like to proceed? And let's go around, take a vote. I don't want to waste people's time. This is, I mean, I, I.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Council members would like to recess for about five minutes for a quick discussion outside, if we may.
Go.
Well, you can go to a separate section of the hallway.
One little side comment. I would request that people use the microphones as much as possible. I have a personal reason having to do with hearing loss that I'm working on and so on, and I don't know about others, but some people I can hear, even in the short period of time. Some people I can't. Just try to, try to use the mic, or I'm going to be sitting here like, you know, I'm in my own little executive session.
There is a, on your microphone, if you look on the left-hand side, there is a section. If you turn the, hit the plus.
Turn it up even higher.
It'll come, you'll hear this through the speaker on the.
All right, thank you for pointing that out. Hopefully it helps. I'd be remiss if I didn't say it at this point, in case you're wondering why I have this look on my face.
Okay, so I, you have to remind me where we were. I think we made a motion to accept the agenda as amended. I think Mrs. Ancona made a motion. I don't, yes, Mr. Vassella seconded it, and then I think we had the comment discussion. So now we need a vote. The committee, vote of the committee, right? Okay. So all in favor of amending the agenda? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Now on to item 3, which is new business, and discussion, item 1 is actually discussion of the 2017-2018 budget. Oh, before we do that, I wanted to welcome all of the members of the Board and Council who joined us, because I understand that it's not just our Subcommittee that we had appointed. So if we could, everybody could go around and just state for the record who is here, that would be helpful. Start. Did it work? You're not on yet.
Sure, Paul Vassella.
Sharon Braverman.
Bob Tuvell.
Emily Guyen.
Jim Maricini.
Carol Anist.
Diana Sarah.
Rose Hart.
Gail Padreca.
Dave Nagel.
Beth Delbuno.
Ann Harder.
Danielle.
Pamela Maraca.
Stephen Sylvia.
Cindy Stam.
Joshua Shulman.
Jane Ancona Siegel. We only can have six mics on at a time. So if you're pushing the button and it's not picking you up, it's because there's too many on.
Nancy Petronio.
Bill Collins.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we're on to Agenda Item 1, which is discussion of the budget. So I'm going to pass around kind of our impact by year, and I have sent this out. I emailed it to everybody in the room. But I just thought it would be a good outline for some discussion. I know recently there was, at your town council meeting, there was a decision, there was a vote made to fund the Board of Education at the 0.3% versus the ask of the 2.49%. So we wanted to just have some open discussion as to what that entails and what that would look like for the Board of Education. I know Mrs. Delbuno made a suggestion and said that she would like us to use the $1.2 million in health benefits money to fund our operating budget or things in our operating budget. And we want to be able to have an open dialogue on what that would look like and why that is so difficult. So. Start, go.
Lou, do you want to describe the problematic reason for the using the 1.2 in the operating budget and creating that kind of a hole for the following year?
As everyone's aware, the $1,200,000 action that was taken on Tuesday evening creates a gap of 1.83% of the Board of Education budget against our current operating plan for 2017-2018. The dominant portion of Board of Ed expenditures are salaries and benefits, which are typically in the low 80% of total expenditure range. And variable costs to the operation are not really significant outside of addressing it through modification of the staffing that, you know, is authorized for any one year. The practices we have indulgent developed this budget at 2.49% for the $71,936 requested, you know, caught up the $515,000 shortfall that was created from last year's actions. So it was a combination of about .73 and 1.83, if I remember my fractions here, to get to the 2.49% number. So the Board of Education budget, operating budget to operating budget, started as a request of 1.83% plus a catch-up of the $515,000. And taking the Board of Ed budget down another $1.2 million at this point, even though there's money that's in the reserve account as of today, it has basically created another situation of a starting point for a budget that is, you know, the .3 that was passed on. And when we have fixed operating commitments for existing staff, ATs, other unionized employees that approach 1.1, 1.2 million, there really has to be give in the salary or in the staffing area to address this. You know, in a number of the meaningful areas that we have across the budget, one of the most volatile that we have to pay specific attention to is in the special ed area. Now, year by year, the numbers that have occurred can change dramatically and quickly. You know, we've ridden three very good years in a row where by the trends of our students departing the district compared to new special ed kids identified and outplaced has been favorable. This year, that has turned around, where we have about eight or nine net students going out over last year's number. And we don't have necessarily a, we're in a neutral position right now for next year, where it's not positive or negative at this point. However, because of this volatility, it has put us in a position where we have to always hedge our bets to make sure that the required legal expenses, you know, that we're mandated to carry are covered and provided for. You know, this is only prudent budgeting and prudent decision-making. In trying to give everybody a sense of that, one of the major elements that was embedded in our budget for years and years has been the excess cost state agency placement grant. The outplacement tuitions have been budgeted year after year, net of our estimated grant. Now, that amount that's sitting in our budget is a $600,000 offset to the tuition expense. So if you looked at our detailed budget pages, you would see $2,667,000 as our net special ed tuition budget for next year. In reality, it's $3,267,000 offset by an expected revenue grant offset from the state of $600,000. This excess cost state agency placement grant is the only current year grant the state has. Typically, all other grants are based on the prior year results, and they will give you some formula off of last year's results. This excess cost grant was specifically intended to address the potential catastrophic and volatile nature of what special ed is. And with the legislation that's passed, the, without seeing implementer language of how that is all going to play out, it appears on the surface that the grant, if it passes for special ed, appears to be okay, but the district would lose all of its flexibility on risk management when it comes to dealing with a significant number of outplacements, because there would be no backstop for the program and have to all be internally financed, and because of the loss of that risk control feature in the budget. The money may be okay at this point for next year, but the risk factor goes up substantially because we don't have a security blanket any longer. And because of that, you know, if we're looking at the management and administration and the recommendations I need to make to the Board for how to use the non-lapsing fund money, we may need to hedge against that and hold back some of the resources just as our own protection for what might happen in special ed. You know, certainly as the year unfolds, you know, you could really, some of these things work out properly, but walking into next year, 15 months out right now of what you're. your known history would be, I would just be very uncomfortable making a recommendation that you can, you know, completely not worry about this. Now, putting it in context of the .3% increase that's on the table right now is really what creates the larger concern. At 2.49%, our budget would have, you know, adequate resources to be fully funded and have an adequate maintenance budget for ourselves. I can't speak for the board as far as how they will vote, but I, in the interest of trying to preserve as many positions as possible, I would expect that there would be a significant cut in the maintenance budget. And many of those activities are back-end loaded, starting at this time of the year, where we're planning all of our summer projects and getting everything lined up for implementation. If our budget goes, for example, from $1 million down to $300,000, I will not have a place to bail out any longer in the board budget, where I could say I can just cancel some projects and I can compensate for an overage elsewhere. I would have to go really to the non-lapsing fund as basically the hedge against that particular risk that's here. And, excuse me, you know, that's kind of, I wouldn't say the artistic part of what I do, but many times I have to juggle how 10 different assessments of different expenditure patterns of the districts are going and weigh them off against each other as far as what's doing well, what's, you know, getting into a problem, and looking for a balance that works out to zero. You know, if by the, essentially, having to use the non-lapsing fund as our support for operating expenses, and to the best of our ability preserving our staff, it puts us in a very precarious position in other areas of the budget. And, you know, that just factor needs to be known by everybody, that it's not just a clean 1.2%. Some of the decision-making on our part is, with the $515,000 not being taken at this point, was to try to preserve options, both for the benefit of the community as far as larger initiatives that we can consider and try to do collaboratively, or only take the money when we need it. If I took the money early in the year and didn't need it for that purpose, I wouldn't be gaining anything. So the prudence of holding off, holding off, and waiting until the last possible moment to do this, you know, I would like to think I'm acting both in the best interest of the town and of the Board of Ed to try to, you know, create a win-win situation on how we maximize the use of our financial resources.
Lou, oh. When you're done with that, I know another thing that came up, I heard in the town council meeting, was the fact that last year with our .49% increase and what we did with the $515,000, that there was talk that, oh, well, there were 15 positions that were, said that were going to be cut, and it wasn't 15, it was 14. And, you know, we were able to, you know, save those positions. But that was done with a lot of work. There were deferrals, there were this and that. Can you help explain that? Because I think that's important.
Correct. Several board meetings ago, I was asked to put together just a synopsis of the travels of the $515,000 in the non-lapsing fund and what transpired. And Pam was kind enough to put together a great graphic for me, because I couldn't get it done just on analytical financial talk. And the results of when that initial commitment was made to fund the non-lapsing kind of $515 was on April 7th last year, April 8th, can't remember, one of those days. And from April 8th, 2016, until the start of school, there were at least 40 personnel changes that happened, which, in this case, on a net basis positively impacted our budget, where we were able to accrue additional breakage because of resignations for people that we were able to rehire at lower rates, some other individuals that just resigned and moved on with the same net result of, you know, bringing costs down, and so several other deferrals and just making decisions to stall on filling certain positions. You know, as of the time I did that assessment in the middle of February, we were somewhere between half and two-thirds of the way to covering the $515,000. Now, other things still happened during the year. We haven't had any negative issues at this point, but we really haven't had any other positives. So we haven't quite gotten there to cover the $515 shortfall from our internal operations. But, you know, when we look at everything in aggregate, we have to decide on, you know, what things will not move forward so we can redirect resources to certain things. You know, and one of our goals, and if you think of the contingency planning that I do on behalf of the board and the town, is to try to keep those options open. How can I maximize the set of circumstances we have going forward? So that's kind of where we're at right now. I believe the graphic will be, you know, passed around later this evening for individuals to see, so you can get that more detailed.
One of the things, one of the positions that we deferred that I'm regretting was a maintenance position. We had a retirement, and we didn't fill the maintenance position, and therefore some of our maintenance, we felt behind our maintenance, because we didn't have a person, but, and that turned into something bigger too. So, but those are some of the things that we forced to get a little bit of breakage to save some of that money that was in that account.
Correct.
Thank you. And last year with the .49%, you know, there was some significant pain. We did lay off two administrators, we laid off a teacher, we laid off the high school computer lab tutor and webmaster. We increased class sizes because we did lose four positions to attrition. We canceled some math classes. Our administrators have had a salary freeze for the last two years. So we, that's as a result of everything that had to be done last year. The biggest thing was, you know, we eliminated our gifted and talented program. So again, to be in a position this year where we might have a .3% increase, and we have all these contractual obligations, and we have payroll to make, it would put us in a really, really tight spot. Therefore, I know that Lou has worked a little bit with Ann, and they have found a solution that meets the needs of the district and the town without impacting the mill rate, and we would like to see if we could maybe discuss that in executive session. Sorry, I, what I should have said is that, in order for us to make that happen, it's actually a real estate discussion. So that's what we'd be going into executive session to talk about.
And it's really all related, and one of the things that we had talked about, it's sort of related to the town hall project. And we look at ourselves, we've always said our business is in schools, not in office buildings, so the town hall isn't as important to us. We're in an old school now, we, you know, our business is in the schools. So as we've kind of looked to find some creative solutions, how do we promote the town hall project, and it, how it's going forward, and what can we do to help with resources that we have, to kind of combine them with the talents, to work together toward a common solution? And I believe Ann and Lou have done an admirable job coming up with a proposal to bring to your attention, so that everybody is at least aware of some possibilities that may be out there.
I think that makes total sense for the two finance people to have sat down, talk about things, and come up with a joint proposal. I mean, they're the finance experts, and I think that's fantastic, and I look forward to discussing that, and thank both of you for your time in doing that.
For the record, I'm... I just want to clarify the statement, because it sounds like they were sequestered in a room by themselves without direction and kind of came up with a scheme, and here you are, folks, let's take a look at it. I just want to be sure that everyone understands that's not what happened. And I think last year, when we were at this point, what came down and what was perceived is that, again, Ann and Lou together came up with a solution to the budget that was passed. That's really not their function, and that's not really what happened. This time, I was there, and Ann and I had talked about it, and yes, the three of us sat down and we kind of threw around some numbers, but it's not two people solving the budget of the town. So I really feel I have to clarify that.
Thank you. I don't think we're talking about solving the budget of the town, but we're here to talk about the 0.3 and some possibilities. And what's really unique about the proposal that you'll hear is, there is a possible real estate transaction that we would like to discuss that may benefit both the town and the board, and put us in a position where we can maybe, actually, I hate to use this word, but shift some money around so that it works, so that it would enable both the town and the board to be in a better position going into the budget.
And I certainly didn't mean, I mean, the town manager and I worked very closely together on kind of the bigger picture thing, so my apologies. What I meant was the details of, you know, the devil's in the details, and so I was talking about that, so my apologies.
And I didn't mean to insult anybody. I know everyone's been working really hard, it's just, you know, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who's working on this. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'd like to make a motion. We move into executive session for the purpose of real estate discussion.
Seconded by Mrs. Guyan. Any discussion?
Who's voting?
I have to invite everybody, right?
All right, you'll need two-thirds under state law, two-thirds affirmative vote, which is 12 people since they're 18 around here.
The only ones voting is the subcommittee.
Go ahead, you say that.
Yeah, the subcommittee would invite whomever they like.
We have four members of the board subcommittee that I appointed, so, and so those board members, I think, were going to vote to go into executive session, and then we can invite the rest to join us.
My apologies for the confusion.
No problem. Okay, it is confusing. This whole process is confusing. Okay, so we have a, wait a minute, where were we again? We had a...
We have a motion.
Okay, so we have to vote, the subcommittee can, okay, vote. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Okay, I would like everybody here to join us in executive session if they would like. I'm sorry, except for, sorry.
Except for Mark.
Except...
Yes.
Yes, except for all the members of the public, the one member. Yes, we voted, yes.